Back in regular session. We're going to rejoin the agenda with a pledge of allegiance, please. Good morning. All right, we've got a few special presentations tonight. I'm going to rehearse the order and look at the time process and have our auditors come up first so they can be lead once they're done. Thank you for joining us.
Happy birthday. You're welcome. Well, thank you and I go ahead.
I'm going to jump out to the audience. Are you presenting or just, you just have paperwork?
Yes.
Yes.
You didn't bring audio there?
No.
I'm going to jack it up.
Maybe you should bring a microphone. So, once again, you had a great year. I should start out by saying you didn't get the full report yet of the actual books because the state of New Jersey and my profession has another GASP statement as an accounting announcement that we want us to include this year, which is GASP 75, which is basically a number that they hired somebody to calculate that they've got to give to everybody in the state, every end of the year in the state has to be added in, which they said when I had my data for maybe one hour.
Phil, can I turn the mic to you?
Even though the deadline is working.
Get it pushed along.
Even though the deadline is seven forty. So, I appreciate you taking these out early. All those numbers only affect the GAAP basis of accounting, which is full accrual, which we don't talk about anyhow because we go by a budgetary basis, which is what the Department of Education is talking. So, that's why we're here. So, under that budgetary basis of accounting, your fund balance went up nine hundred thirty three thousand dollars this year. Part of that is timing though because in that nine hundred thirty three thousand dollars, we have two point three million dollars in incomerses, mostly to the capital projects that you were pulling out of capital reserves. So, when we spend that down this year, your fund balance will go down that amount a lot. So, I'm assuming that, see, you said you gave them?
They're all, it's all on the share sheet.
So, the overall fund balance is six million eight hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Your reserve incomerses, I just talked about, is two point three. Your capital reserve is still two point four seven two. So, that's a big number of which, though, a lot of that incomerses, we need to draw that down at the end of this year. And your excess surplus as part of your plan, you drew it down to three hundred thousand dollars, down to two hundred thousand dollars. By that being, the budget here and now, you use three hundred thousand dollars as a revenue to balance the budget. Next year, you'll only have two hundred thousand dollars to balance the budget. And why we're going to draw that down is a number of years ago, the state came out and when they cut the state aid, they took your excess surplus away from you. So, it's better you to use it than the state to use it. So, overall, your fund balance is very, very healthy. Your serial bonds, in 2019, you're making the last payment of three hundred fifteen thousand dollars so that you'll have more bond payments unless you go out and issue more debt. You still have a million seven hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars in capital leases at the end of 6/30/18, of which you're paying down about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. So, that's about four or five years left for that. Your food service stayed relatively the same at fifty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, and we only had one recommendation, and something the state makes us look at. It was for your semi-program, that you had to get applications, you had to get parental consent. If you have more, if you have less than forty applicants, you don't even have to go in for slightly more than that. So, when you fall into that area, you're supposed to get ninety percent response, and you got sixty-six percent response, which is probably about three accounts. So, it's kind of a crappy recommendation. I really, if it wasn't me, it wouldn't be hard for the financial statement, or if I heard the state, one of us could have commented on that. So, that's my recommendation other hand, where we had no comments or recommendations. You're healthy, anything's positive. So, if you're answering questions you might have, but this was the call.
Any questions?
All right, I should introduce my associate bond lead from a future partnership, right? The annual for me. I don't know, so that's great.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Slightly unrelated directly to the audit, but certainly financially related to the district. I know we've gotten some information, or we got the information that the S P will bring to the district, went up.
Yes, which is a great, a great thing that you had happen because in this climate, especially over the last four or five years, rating agencies got burned, and they're very reluctant to give any increases. So, your overall health helped them to give you a good increase, so that was a very good positive accomplishment that happened.
Can you just, like I said, I won't put you on the spot, but just talk a little bit about what that means, sorry, what are they looking at? What is that, obviously outside of just them saying, hey, it looks like you're financially stable, what does that mean if it were to go float a bond in the future?
Well, the rating itself is your credit worthiness. So, therefore, if you have better credit, you'll get a lower rate because it's less risk for them, they know you're going to pay it back. So, that bump might give you a quarter to a half point interest depending on the market that day. So, that's an overall positive. And to answer the other half of your question, they look at many economic factors, they look at your overall tax base, the viability of the commercial, community, businesses that you have, the health of the businesses that you have, the vacancies or how full you are, your residential strength, many factors such as that, and your overall individual finance, which I think should be number one, but yeah, I think they actually weigh more the health of your overall community business.
So, there's a lot out of the seven, ten of us control up here, I should say, or there's a lot to do with the township environment around us.
Yes, I would say it's probably eighty percent the township community and twenty percent our own finances. I mean, if you crap the bid, they'll give you a bad rating.
Sure, sure.
I do, but I wasn't sure how to formulate the question. You kind of started to attack it, I guess. And I want to ask this question again, not to push you on the spot. With what you say in terms of overall budget, credit worthiness of the district, what could a district like us go out and float a bond for that would be, I mean, not even talk about what it would be used for, but could a, you know, could you look over twenty, thirty, forty million dollars? I guess my question is, when I think about credit worthiness, right, the credit score, I think about, well, that gives you access to certain amount of money than it would be like a budget. Is it similar for us in terms of, you know, how you, this is a question I'm asking, I'm not sure how phrasey.
Well, you're more, you're more. You're more statistically confined by the state of New Jersey, and you're allowed to have about three percent of your net valuation, estimated net valuation possible, which for you, come on, can you pump up your number? But it's like probably a hundred million dollars that you're allowed to rock the bond. Now, what you can afford, what you think your community can afford.
Obviously, is up to us, but that's the question, okay. But that's kind of the question I was getting at, what is the average range if we all decided to go nuts? And I'm not saying we are, I just wanted to ask the question.
You are allowed to issue right now up to ninety-nine million dollars. Okay, so that, before that, that's a question, but you're allowed statistically to ninety-nine million dollars. Thank you. I did have one administrator, Ms. Howie, in the neighborhood community, who'd been on a plan as paid as you go, and his philosophy was different. He said, interest rates are so low now, we should out bond everything, bond every road, and while it's cheap, because it's some jerk, you need me, we thought we'd go and pay as you go. So, there's always two different costs.
Well, you know, you always hear the argument from the town, is, you know, does it make sense for the residents on that road to pay for it today fully?
Yes.
Or on that, right? And then for the next thirty years, how many people are going to actually use it?
That's right.
That's always interesting.
And you're confined also how long people out forward the debt by the estimated useful length of the assets that you're bonding.
That keeps it, yes.
It's also a little bit easier to say you're going to out bond when you'll have to go for a vote for that bond.
So, it's a very, very different course up here than it is township, not that it's any different, but I mean, it is. They're also confined by competition, how much they go for this key someone else.
Yeah. Is there, I mean, I know you kind of go through all the specific details, but directionally, are there any recommendations you have beyond what we're already doing? I mean, I think we try pretty hard to be fiscally sound and try to bring up those reserve budgets when we can, use them appropriately when we can. I mean, we've probably been on the page to go more than, you know, we're not looking to, we don't have any plans that we at least have talked about immediately in the future to bond anything or change anything we're doing. In fact, we've taken on million-plus dollar projects out of reserves because we've built that fund up over time. So, anything you would directionally give us as any more advice, or are we heading down the right way?
Well, you're heading down the right way, obviously. What I worry about in some board of educations is the amount of excess surplus fluctuates wildly. And with the expenditure cap or the tax that we have, that can constrain what you want to do. So, consistency is the key. You can't go on a roller coaster. You have to go on up at two percent every year at most, that's what we're allowed. Obviously, debt service, if you float a bond, that's outside of those calculations, I don't want to do that. So, of course, that doesn't help the taxpayers, but it's also not a whole topic. But for you, with the planning, that is outside that number. So, by being consistent and having a low excess surplus number, enrolling everything back in, that is financially prudent for the budgets that we're coming in. I always say the definition of the motors, we're coming after the battle, and everyone can hurt their whole fight. But having said that, what I'm not seeing is, and I'm not an expert on it, is having to fill what the capital needs, is your capital plan where you want it to be, and ask the big ticket questions. Your operating budget should go rate. I mean, you're saying about the same level of expenditure every year, you are keeping the same level of fund balance, anything you're putting back in the capital reserve, and then using accrued leave, all that is great. I have places to do all that, but then you have to plan it for it. Who the hell would punish it so you don't watch out for it?
I would say there's never not a need for it, just like any district, but I would say we try pretty hard to make sure we're keeping on top of big projects. We've got a plan to attack the big projects over the next five or so years, at least in the foreseeable future.
Well, it's in the facilities plan, the strategic plan, and not what we get secondary in control. We have these, we have, we have plans.
Do you have plans?
We have.
We have, we have lots of plans. We have, we can't do it all in one year, but we've chipped away a lot of the, a lot of the big projects, and we have money in the bank for ones that we think are coming down the road, these roofs. So, yeah, I'm pretty happy where we are. Facility flies, considering, you know, this is my fifth year, and like I said a million times, all of our associated states, that was a pretty big deal.
Is there, is your opinion that once you move excess surplus into reserve, that it's fairly safe from the state?
No, it should be. I was shocked and amazed when they took half of the excess surplus in past years and tried to take half of the capital reserves. They made the rules up as they went along, so I cannot guarantee, though I respect rules, it's like, do as I say, not as I do. I was fairly disgusted, I don't want to start coming out with that during that, because I had districts that had great plans and were consistently over the year rolling back a million five excess surplus, and then that just shot a rate in the flood, you know, I don't think it was fair. So, that's why when you were drawing down your excess surplus, four to three to two now, that is limiting that exposure. So, I think that's very prudent. So, there was always that risk. It was the only time you did it, it was one time too many, but it could happen again. I hope it doesn't, but it could happen again.
Any other questions?
This is probably the biggest day of the year to think about. We're learning about fiscal health and our, I'm saying that. It's pretty good. Well, this year, the more.
What's up? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you guys, you too. All right, we're going to keep the, I wish you just to set up your time.
Yeah. I'm just, it's on the happy view of it.
I'll be back.
It is our annual PARK results presentation. So, I'll be giving you some information about our E L A, our math, and our special education subgroup. There are some changes to PARK for next year, and I'll talk about those at the end as well. All of the data is in our team drive, it will be open to the public, I'll post those tomorrow, so you can see the presentation, because there are a lot of numbers, you may want to take more time to look at those numbers more closely. So, our first slide really compares the last three years of testing, so 2016 through 2018. So, we're looking for trends to see that we're moving students from the lower level, which is, is not meeting proficiency, all the way up to exceeding expectations. So, what we look for is not only that our overall percentage of proficiency has increased, but that we're also moving students from the lower scores up to the higher scores. So, for E L A, I'll leave them out, so in case you can't see those, we have eighty-three percent overall, so this is all students, no matter what category you may fall into, what subgroup. Third grade was eighty-three percent proficient, fourth grade is eighty-seven, fifth grade is eighty-nine, sixth grade is seventy-six, seventh grade is ninety percent proficient, and eighth grade is eighty-six percent. That's overall with all students. For math, again, third, same exact data format, relative across three years to see how students are moving. And for the third grade, they're at seventy-nine percent, fourth grade seventy percent, fifth grade sixty-eight percent, sixth grade sixty-two percent, seventh grade fifty percent, eighth grade, this is eighth grade, only not students taking algebra or geometry, thirty-six percent, Algebra I is eighty-eight percent, and Geometry is ninety-six percent. So, then to break some of those data down, so I'm looking at the cohorts and see how are they progressing over the years. So, in 2017, our grade three cohort had a hundred and seventy students and were seventy percent proficient. By looking at that same group of students, which now has increased to a hundred and seventy-four students, they are now at a six percent proficient. So, that group of students increased by sixteen percent. Similarly, I look at grade four from 2017, we had a hundred and seventy students, and they were eighty-five percent proficient. And then I looked down in 2018, similar number, one hundred and seventy-three, were at eighty-nine percent proficient. You can also look at numbers that are in the lower categories, that the year before were larger numbers. So, if I look at that first group of grade three, we had eight that were in the level one, and by the time they were in the fourth grade, we were looking at three in that lowest level. So, our students are moving from the lower levels to the higher levels.
Sandy, I don't want to interrupt it.
Yep.
You have third and fourth year, and they're going up. Were there any cohorts where it went down?
We had cohorts that stayed the same.
Okay.
Actually, we do have one grade in math that did go down. The numbers did change by about nineteen students, so it is difficult to compare because it was such a large change in students, but we did see movement within the one to five, and more of them were falling into the lower numbers than the higher than when they were the year before. So, for sixth grade, similar, we had a hundred and seventy-five students in 2017, with the arrow, seventy-eight percent proficient, and then by seventh grade, you're at ninety. So, that is a big success, so we moved those students at that point. And then the group in seventh grade had eighty-five percent and moved up to eighty-six. If you notice, that's statistically not a huge number, but what I looked for there was how many students were moving from the lower levels. So, if I look and compare a seventh grade in 2017, where they had four at level one, and nine at level two, sixteen at level three, and I look down in 2018, those students were now, you know, one at level one, four at level two. So, we're seeing students moving up. Where did they move? They moved to level three. So, they didn't quite get up into the proficiency range, so our overall percentage stayed the same, but we went from having thirteen that were really quite far from the proficiency mark to only five. So, we did move students up. In math, to point out, grade three, probably the biggest comparison I found there was it looks as if grade four to grade five, as I've been mentioning, the statistics are the same, sixty-eight with similar students, a hundred and sixteen in 2017, a hundred and nineteen in 2018. But where did, where did the numbers change? And if I look again at our numbers in the one, level one and level two, in level one, we had seven kids that were in the very lowest range, and now by 2018, we had one. And we had twelve at level two, and then we had nine. So, again, they're moving up to the three. They did not make it to the four and the five yet, but we are moving them out of the ones and the twos, and we're getting closer, we're got them up to the three. Overall, we're still looking at sixty, you know, in the seventies and sixties, however. This is one that you, like what you're asking, Dino. So, here's a group in grade six, we had fifty-five, we moved down to fifty. Our numbers went from one seventy-five down to a hundred and forty-nine. So, we have big changes, but we also dropped in percentage, you know, like overall, our cohort was fifty-five. So, where did the students go? Well, in sixth grade, we have all the students. In seventh grade, we have seventh grade level math, and then we have some students taking Algebra I. So, some of those Algebra I kids are now out of the seventh grade cohort. So, yes, the overall percentage goes down, our overall proficiency went down, but those particular students were still proficient, they just now are in Algebra I course and no longer in the seventh grade math. So, that is why you see that drop.
Sandy.
Yes.
Dude, are you pulling those out, or are they giving you that cohort separately? They don't know what students are in which classes, right?
They give us, they do know.
Oh, right, so they know that ten students, for instance, are taking Algebra?
When they take the PARK.
How do they know that cohort is?
They mark them as Algebra I.
They do.
I have to break them out if I want to say seventh grade Algebra students versus eighth grade Algebra students, you know, I can keep looking at it that way. And then we only have eighth graders in Geometry, so that group is easy to pull out, but we had like ninety-nine in Algebra I, of which twenty-seven of them were seventh graders, and the remaining seventy-two were eighth graders. So, I can kind of start to figure out where those kids went.
Yeah. Because what's interesting about this one is you see in grade six in 2017, with a hundred and seventy-five students, there were three in level one, and then we jumped to fifteen or sixteen less students at six in level one, right?
Yes, yes. I mean, so those particular, we had more out of our core math that did not pass, that went down. And I'm going to, when I pull up our subgroup, you're going to see where they went. I mean, unfortunately, our subgroup, there are some, one of our subgroups is not moving in the same direction that our general student, general education students are. Okay, so for eighth grade, we break our students out, so all of the eighth graders are math, are either an eighth grade core, which is regular eighth grade math, whether in Algebra I, whether in Geometry. So, if you look across, I circled that, because the area where we really want to focus is the fact that thirty-six percent, although it's still a large number, it's ninety-two students are in our eighth grade regular math, and only thirty-six percent of those students are proficient. There's a large number falling in the one-twos and threes. Our Algebra students continue, our seventh grade Algebra students continue to be a hundred percent proficient, and we did have some Algebra students, we opened the program up a little bit more last year, included more students. We also had a few more students that did not reach proficiency on the test. And then Geometry, we did not have a hundred percent proficiency, I think what we have one, one did not. So, the options for them, the high schools opened, or they should say the state has opened it up, so because Algebra I is a graduation requirement, those students need to either retake the Algebra I test as an eighth grader, or third, well, not our subgroup, but they have to retake it when they get to high school, they either have to retake Algebra I as a high schooler, or they have to wait until their junior year and take it when they take the Algebra II test. So, there are some options, but they will have to retake that assessment for graduation. Okay, so now we'll look at subgroups. So, the one subgroup that we have here in Denville is our special education, our students with disabilities. So, when I break out that data, because now that we have broken our math into three levels, it's very clear to see which group is struggling the most, and it's our regular core math, and that's where we've been really putting our focus this year. But even within our core math, I pulled out our special education, and these are the numbers that we're looking at. So, where are they really falling? And if you look across, this is comparing, this is not over years, this is just last year's data. So, I looked at the general education students and then the students with I U Ps and did a comparison. So, what we would like to see is that these numbers are moving at the same, same path, the same rate, but what we're looking at is about eighty-six percent of our general education in sixth grade are proficient, and thirty-two percent for, for our I U Ps too, is this slide? In the E L A. I did miss a slide there, yes, I'm sorry. So, grade three, I'm going to go backwards, versus for E L A, and for grade three, we have a hundred and fifty-four general education students, of which ninety-one percent are proficient. We have thirty students with I U Ps in third grade, and with forty, of those students, forty percent of them were proficient, so twelve. So, then you have to look at the numbers that fall into the one through three. And in fourth grade, we have ninety-six percent of general education are proficient, fifty-three for our students with disabilities. Fifth grade, we had ninety-six percent proficient for general ed and fifty-eight percent for special education. You can see why this is a focus. Same pattern, eighty-six for general ed for sixth grade, thirty-two percent for special education. Grade seven, ninety-seven percent are proficient, fifty-seven. Eighth grade is ninety-four percent, and, go around with that, forty-two percent for grade eight. Okay, for math, it's even more noticeable. We have eighty-four percent and fifty-three, so by third grade, our students are fairly close, I think eighty-three and fifty-three are fairly close in terms of the needs of those students. But as we grow up the grades, you'll see, fourth grade, eighty-one percent proficient, thirty-two for our special education. Fifth grade math, seventy-six percent general ed, thirty-two percent special ed. Seventy-three percent for sixth grade, seven percent special ed. Sixty-one for seventh, seventh grade, seventeen, forty-eight and ten. So, we're seeing a decline, you know, in the number of students. If I just look at the students, we have seven proficient, six proficient, three proficient. So, when we have them in third grade every year, we're losing a few of those students. So, our E L A trajectory, we have really increased, so I'm going to point out some of those successes, as with our Algebra. We do have two students that are in special education for Algebra I, and they were a hundred percent proficient, and then a few of our general education students were not. So, highlights, so some things are really noticeable. So, our grade four cohort went from seventy percent proficient up to eighty-six. So, our, including special ed, so general education and special education are moving in E L A. We had another group that was ninety percent that went up to ninety percent. So, we are moving those kids. Geometry students consider, continue to be high proficiency. We had a large number of students take Algebra I this year. The students that were not proficient were moving up the levels, right, we were ones and twos, and now we're getting up to threes. And then we had our eighty, ninety, ninety percent, which are very significantly high, proficient in E L A for five and seven. Under the areas for growth, it continues to be the math, and we're putting a lot We had another group that was ninety percent that went up to ninety percent. So we are moving those kids. Geometry students consider, continue to be high proficiency. We had a large number of students take Algebra One this year. The students that were not proficient were moving up the levels. We were ones and twos and now we get up to threes. And then we had our eighty, ninety, ninety percent, which are very significantly high, proficient in ELA for five and seven. Under the areas for growth, it continues to be the math. And we put a lot of emphasis for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year on our math because of these areas. We have our grades fourth through eight, including all students, we are below seventy-five percent. Only third grade was above seventy-five percent proficient. Our eighth grade math, again, that's the core, algebra or geometry kids, thirty-six percent. So that's our focus and our special education suburbs. So here's all the things we've put into place this year, so we have a lot of things going on. So that seems dismal, but I can tell you, we've, we did the same thing five years ago in ELA. That we looked at this and our ELA scores were down here and our math scores were, you know, continuing pretty steady. And then we changed over to an assessment and our ELA has continued to go up and our math kind of went down. But now we're gonna be on the same trajectory for math. So we adopted Big Ideas Math for six to eight and revised all the K-Aid math curriculum. We utilized our staff and their areas of strength, which means we moved people around. Finally, their best placement will be the best grade level and their best content area to teach. We did a concentrated, multi-sensor math training, which was a thirty-hour certification program this summer for our special education and primary education teachers. We incorporated manipulatives, hands-on approach K through eight, so even our middle schoolers are using a hands-on approach in math. We're using the math workshop model, which means we put two blocks of math, K to five. We already had the double block in middle school, but now we have a K-five, one where we're really concentrating on new math, like the new content. And then the other block is revisiting, either enriching students who are comfortable with that content or revisiting and doing remediation. We implemented readiness assessments this year, which means the students start out, started out with a pre-test on the content from the year before. So going into, let's say, third grade, they started the year with a second grade math test, the end of the year, second grade math test, to see where did they end, so that their third grade teachers could start by remedying any of the holes that we had from second grade and not start with third grade content until they were ready. We implemented PRC benchmarks, so we purchased a new program called On Course Assessments. And on those assessments, students are able to take a very similar PRC benchmark that uses all the same tools and become familiar with the instrument, but also gives immediate feedback of areas of which standards that they are not proficient on yet. So we'll have a nice glimpse by January of where they are before they even get close to taking that assessment. We are identifying, like I said, reading levels for the first time in six to eighth grade. We've done reading levels K to five, but not through the middle school, so now we went all the way through eighth grade. And we are using Usdella as a supplemental resource, which is a, just a lot of informational reading sources. The students could go on and do informational reading, there's just a lot of articles in there that their teachers are using as a supplemental resource. And then we moved our special education teachers to be grade-specific. So in the long run, we really bounced them around, where they might be doing a second grade resource room in ELA, a fourth grade in math. We made them a fourth grade teacher, so that way they can attend all trainings with fourth grade teachers and really get familiar with the content and skill levels of what fourth graders should be doing. So they can attend all collaborative time meetings, all in-service meetings, you know, all common planning, everything at the same. So questions? A lot of information I know to digest. So in summary, I'm so impressed of how much we've done in six years, but five years with our coach and moving in ELA. And we're gonna do the same with math. We have work to do with our special education group, but I feel like we've been able to really target what expenses are missing and who it is, so that we can actually get those kids to help the, the. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Colless. Anybody, any questions? Pretty thorough, appreciate it. Same note, let's move on to superintendent comments.
So I put out a letter Friday, hold on the last two weeks, explaining how we're gonna do email monitoring. I just want to make sure the board was aware of it and also to state publicly that we do have a system to monitor use of our, of our technology. For example, we do have the ability to set controls so that we can monitor students, certain searches. So basically what we're focusing on is self-harm and harm to others. If a student does search for something that is self-harm or harm to others, we will get an alert. Alert goes to, it goes to the principals, vice principals and to Cindy Castanza. And during the school day, we obviously are watching this and checking our email. But overnight, what we do is we have a, we have an answering service that will monitor that and it will contact us. Now, we've been doing this, this is going on our third year, it's the first time we're having this answering service monitor overnight. But we've been doing this going on our third year, we've only had three of these searches that have come through. And one of the reasons why it's really important is because if we do have one of these searches for self-harm or harm to others that occurs two AM, we may not be looking at our email. As a matter of fact, hope somebody were sleeping at that time. And we would hate to have, you know, tragedy occur because somebody happened overnight and we didn't forewarn. One thing is, we only, we are only monitoring our systems, not like if a child is on their own device, on their own login, like if their own private stuff, it's not, not monitoring that. But we are monitoring what, what children are searching for, if it's inappropriate or if it's something to do with self-harm or harm to others on our devices and then our network. And this has been a great thing, we've dealt with police. But what'll happen is if, if it doesn't, if no one answers it, the police will get the, will be the last call after the six, if it goes through the six of us. And the police are instructed to come to my house and we'll be up, obviously I'm one block away from here. And if I'm not there, then we have a man in the scowl who lives local to it. He will, he's the next person that'll go to his house and we'll be up. So we're trying to put a few spell saves together here to, to be on top of this. It all goes together with our security and our mental health that we're, that we've really been working on as part of our strategic plan. We, the chief and I would like to do a security presentation at the Board of, at the Board of Envy coming up. Just to update the public, we'll, we'll get it out there on, as to the date, we like to try to do it before the new year. And we will, we will put out information, we'll probably do a condensed version of the presentation that we're doing right now around the state of New Jersey. And we just want to make sure the public's aware, we're known. Project update, so our late view, the bathrooms are open and operational. The meeting center is open and operational, we have ribbon cutting. Room V sixteen is open and operational, the heat has been installed. The security vest fuels are still, we're still waiting for certain materials to come in. And the value HPA C, I'm not sure, but they were working on it today, they were supposed to get finished tonight. So that's my report for today.
Thank you, Mr. Forte. Uh, Dr. Colless, any assistance for that comment?
Yeah, we have enough, right? But, but just to note, for families, the testing calendar for the year is on the website, so you can find it there. There will be some revision after the new year because there were some proposals, proposed changes to PRC to the State Board of Education, which will be voted on in January, so there will be small revision, well, there will be revisions after the new year. And one will be, the goal will be called PRC. It will be now called the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. And the proposal is to reduce the math and language arts section by one, which would be one less day for each grade level. So that's, that calendar will be revised in January, once we get final confirmation from the State Board. But for now, the testing calendar is on the website. Let's move to the assistant superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Colless. Uh, Debaris, any of this administrative comments?
No.
You. Time is now eight eleven PM and we will hold for our first open public comment section of the meeting. Any training or any criticism? Seeing no one, I will close the first public comment section at eight twelve PM. I'll move on to our agenda. Mr. Quag, would you mind offering us your whole vision?
Sure. That's the next game, we're going to go back on by the K BNC. Traders and Board Secretary reports, education reports, terms of temper. And men's terms of service, the end of September.
Any questions? Same note, Mr. Colless, would you mind offering us your movement's action to be taken?
Absolutely. Uh, if there are objections on the personnel, I would like to move items one through seven, these involve hires, resignations. Across the eye, we have substitutes, substitute. We also have, call your attention to three, four and five, the miracles for Mr. Forte, Dr. Colless and Ms. Krausky this evening. And finally, we have a pool of volunteer football marshmallows and we would love to also be rescinding my marshmallow check.
I'll share.
So now this, now this on.
I know we've had some conversation and discussion on the miracles. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I'm still not a big fan of the walkthrough miracle for a couple of reasons. I'm not, I mean, I have heard the discussions from various people about the benefit the district receives from them. But I'm not convinced that that benefit is worth the outlay. The other question I have is, is I understand that the miracles are supposed to be above and beyond the administrator's normal duties and aren't walkthroughs part of the normal duties? So I mean, since here forty percent increase in total in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, does that mean this, this miracle was basically for forty percent more walkthroughs? Is that how, is that how, is that how I'm understanding how it's worded? Or are walkthroughs not part of the superintendent's gen, uh, work, uh, normal duties?
So.
Yeah. Right, right. So yeah, maybe the, the conversation that Steve Hart, the way our member had addressed this was, you do walkthroughs, but you don't always necessarily do a regular year's number. Again, and maybe this, maybe this is a lot of questions. It's something that you do as a superintendent, it's not necessarily something that you have to hit a hundred, a hundred, two hundred, no second.
No.
That you have to accomplish. I mean theoretically, you could do fifty or you could do seventy, whatever. The point was to get students' abilities to order, have you exposed to what's going on in classrooms in terms of instructions and what's happening. But the next thing we was like, just do more of the, 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 of course. Right, we have webs and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to point out, in light of the presentations, I mean, obviously I appreciate Dr. Colless's goals and they are really on point in terms of, uh, she identifies the areas of good and the challenges. We have, um, especially, especially the, um, comments increasing the achievement, uh, achieving proficiencies. I like those goals even more than what we talked about.
Close to data.
Yeah, and just to jump on Dave's comment too, I would say, and we as a board have always debated quite a bit on miracles and, you know, we had a lot of discussion on it earlier in the year. Want to make sure we felt comfortable with the miracles. They are definitely above and beyond, or they're definitely supposed to be above and beyond what would be the normal duties of in any of these three roles, superintendent, assistant superintendent, business administrator. You know, and I've had quite a few discussions on this, particularly, you know, this goal, conduct of these two hundred and fifty walk, uh, walkthrough evaluations. We've had a lot of discussion over the years on walkthrough evaluations versus full evaluations. Um, and I know Mr. Forte has expressed to me the value in these walkthroughs. It's not a, they're looking for a very, I can't remember, looking for very specific things that are being reinforced in the staff that they feel are beneficial to the students, is that correct?
Right.
And, you know, one thing I would say is, I'm not an educator, I can't say what the right normal number is. Um, I can't say whether it's more beneficial to have a walkthrough versus a full evaluation or what, what that is. It's very hard for me to understand what the right number is or what the right amount is. But when we look historically, that's definitely a much higher number than we have had Mr. Forte do in the past. Um, and I think that we're trying to reinforce, reinforce very specific skills or, um, or characteristics we're trying to get our teachers to, to use. Um, I, I'm okay with it. I did want to point out, I know we've had, we had some discussion on its quantitative goal number three also, which was the grant writing. And I appreciate, um, after I think it's a conversation, that the last important part of that goal about adding at least ten thousand dollars of new revenue, uh, I think that's really beneficial and I appreciate Mr. Forte bringing that to us. I think that, you know, we, we've had this in the past where we've done some grant applications. I know we had limited success. Now, obviously, we're doing some professional development, hopefully improve that success rate. But then also adding it in the fact that, you know, we, we will have a benefit of some additional revenue coming in from the district that is beneficial.
I, I just had a thought about the future-ready status, the miracle for Dr. Colless. It says obtained future-ready status, do we need to specify that it's for the district or is it clear enough as it is?
There's only one type of future-ready status in the district.
Okay.
Obviously, right, it could be, it could be, so I guess we're doing all officials. It's not by person.
It's on me. It's on you, Jordan.
You want to add for the district?
I'm okay. Don, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Any other questions about miracles or any of the other action items?
The only thing I'll add is, we had a discussion, I believe we had a discussion twice, or at least I was involved twice, with the Mariscos' security practices for bus drivers and secretaries. And, you know, we kind of highlight the bus drivers being, it's not, you know, it's not always something we consider about the security of the buses and how they, how they react to the events, you know, and it needs to be critical to patterns of studies. So the Mariscos have highlighted that, that's one of the, uh, special areas of consideration. And it needs to be created as well as, so the Maris have highlighted that. That's one of the, uh, special areas of consideration.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing now, roll call please.
Mr. Pelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes.
Mr. Lord?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Wachner?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Boo, would you mind walking us through instruction programs, please?
There, the only thing that is here.
Oh, sorry.
Is the, uh, is the, uh, per the Lakeview Elementary Field Trip. Does that need to happen this time or are we going to do that next time?
We're going to do it today because it happened before the next week.
Oh, okay. Uh, then, um, there will be no number one because you don't have any workshops with expenses. Uh, so I would like to move number two. Uh, the board approved the Lakeview Elementary School pre-K field trip, two things followed by a tractor, uh, October seventeenth, bring it up October nineteenth.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Number two, is this something we've done every year, transport the pre-k kids to, uh, to the farm, uh, via tractor? Yeah, the principal told me to do it for about twenty years. What do you mean? The police are going to close the road.
I don't recall being on the agenda.
If it ever was on the agenda, it would have been on the field trip list. The only reason I put this one on the agenda is because it's going to occur before the, before the next board meeting. And I wanted everybody to know that they're going to be doing this via, via a tractor.
Are they going to, uh, go down the trail, get to the central trail?
Yeah. They're going to sit like a, you know, it's a hayride. Those hayrides. But we, we're going to close the road.
And they get transported out of the car?
Yeah.
I would say that hay might, did it, three years ago?
Any questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Pelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes.
Mr. Lord?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Wachner?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner, would you mind walking us through operations?
Sure. So the next meeting, we are going to be voting on, um, oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, um, I rescind that. And I make a motion to, um, C one A and D. We are advertising the sale of a compressor at Lakeview. And we are submitting an ad for the Transformer Project at Valley.
Sorry.
These are both accepted, that's why it's on there.
Did I somehow miss these, miss these being, the information being used as a package?
Um.
So, yeah.
Well, uh, we're discussing with the committee and this number A is advertising, you know, um, have a, this is for attendance. As for number B, I, I need to submit, uh, the Transformer, um, approval for the DOE. Which I still have, quite a mix on.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We need to, we need to, we need to submit the approval for the Transformer, uh, and this day's incident.
Okay. Um, so we haven't seen the, we haven't seen the, the details of the project yet?
Yeah, you haven't, you haven't seen the drawings. You haven't seen the proposals.
Okay, so the difference between what we've seen now, what we've seen before and what we will be sending to the DOE is just the architectural drawings and the project specs?
There's a form, a special form that I would fill out with this here.
Okay. Um, is that something that will be available to us later?
Once, if, uh, yes, I think, will we need your draft before we send it to the DOE? Absolutely.
Uh, as long as all that, you know, that we haven't seen is just the drawings, I'm okay with really approving it. I would just like to see the drawings because I'd like drawings for later day.
Well, we'll do, uh, because we have, we don't really work often with friends and colleagues, you know, the idea. We'll ask them for a PDF version of the, you know, because this thing is, you know, this thing is big.
Uh, you have to take a look at it after the meeting.
You want to just look at it at this time?
Yeah, sure, that would be fun too. Either PDF or look at it after the meeting.
All right, so it's transferred?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing now, roll call please.
Mr. Pelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes.
Mr. Lord?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Wachner?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, back to Mr. Pelle, shall we walk us through business, no action to be taken?
We have a problem. So at the next meeting, we will be voting on the personnel, one through three. These are, um, looks like segments for scrubs. Um, we also have for teachers who attend the fall conferences, some teachers will make the review. We have one, the bussie, uh, to be approved, and also, uh, that, that, uh, like, uh, question.
I have a question about the, uh, teachers for the fall conferences. How do we have just a few teachers specifically named, not all the teachers do fall conferences?
Those are part-time teachers with contracts.
Uh, I see it's important to issue the paper, I'll be ready for nights.
Uh, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Boo, would you mind walking us through instruction programs, please?
Certainly. The next meeting, we shall be voting on currently two items, uh, which would be the list of field trip requests. And there will also be workshops with expenses. Uh, we've got everything ranging from Todd and Kay, council review for a student mental health issue certificate program, uh, to several AP teachers for units of study and writing.
Good question.
Yeah, what's on the safe N J T E S O one?
It's that.
And what else? I'm sure.
Teachers of officials separate.
Any other questions? I'll move us through policies because we're talking about what it will be. At the next meeting, we've got a, several, uh, second reading and adoption, uh, policies as well as several first reading. Everybody have any questions on the specific policies? Were said as a light in the tunnel.
I had a, I had a question about forty-one forty termination. Uh, that's, the four thousand policies don't refer to certi- only refer to non-certificated employees, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, it says in there that the board will only, the board is only, uh, will only approve terminations as recommended by the superintendent? Is that, I, I can, I can see scenarios where the board might want to terminate someone but the superintendent doesn't want to recommend that.
Right, so.
So is there, I mean, is that, are we basically, will we be basically tying our own hands in this case?
It's actually illegal for the board to fire anyone that I don't recommend firing. You know, any chance you have of not firing somebody is when it comes to not doing. So, for example, I give you a list of renewed people, that's your chance of overruling me. But during the time, the only people that, this is all checks and balances, so it takes all takes out of hiring. Because you can see, obviously not on this board, but other places, you know, somebody, somebody gets a C and then he gets three, four board members to vote this guy out. So there's a lot of checks and balances in there. So the board, the checks and balances in the board to, for when it comes to personnel is, is, uh, not real and what's called a Donald scenario, if you've ever heard of that. So the board, the board can overrule superintendent, uh, non-tenured staff decision toward Donald scenario, which means they're actually, I would say, I'm not putting them up. That person can petition the board directly and the board can overrule superintendent and them. But other than that, that's the only recourse you have. As a matter of fact, one of the, one of the Q S A things, I'm going to talk about Q S A content. It's actually said that all, all, all terminations are done on a polydropic petition superintendent.
Okay, as long as there is a, as long as there is a means by which the board feels that this person should go, it's, I forgot about the Donald scenario, thank you.
Any other policy questions? See what, we're abolishing, you might tell, you might vote there.
So I, Dave asked you this, right, I actually went to, uh, fill the cash over for, uh, Strauss, just for instance. I figured this is why. Basically what happens, this is such a familiar policy because the law changes all the time with case law. He, he had like a, there was like a five-page regulation, there's a twelve-page policy. He basically took all the stuff in the regulation, put it in the policy and said, don't have the regulation because it's going to be difficult to keep up with the changes involved. And he, he said, I would like, I would like all the districts to abolish it and just go off. Because he's expecting this to change again.
Oh, yeah.
Very soon.
Any other policy questions?
Um, yeah, under, uh, seventy-three, under specific federal property, um, it's a topic that, uh, is not needed. School business administrator will compile this physical inventory, federal property in the district. This physical inventory must be taken and results records out, property records at least once every two years. So is that, I've never, I mean, I've never seen specifically like federal property.
Federal properties are also going to have, just to go into the, like, the, um, I think, uh, the, um, um, actually, you know, that's specifically, um, on the line, um, I think, getting federal, um, all the federal.
So you, you have that inventory, that's not something I've ever seen, but I assume you have.
I don't deserve little, like, things with those two, I can test, uh, another, uh, salary that you expect. Just before we do this, see your song.
Any other questions?
Sure. At our next meeting, there are, um, seven items to be voted on out of the agenda under finance, number one through seven. The monthly bills and the local fund, um, the vote to approve the plan that was discussed tonight, uh, the audit report, the annual audit report, and the current action plan for the one finding. Um, also discard color, uh, color laser jet that's under parable to accept the donation of sensory interference. Shared services agreement for teacher observations from, uh, the Education Services Commission. Additional related services to student ID two oh two seven two three sixty-eight to attend regional day school. And a second, interesting, the second vote to provide staff observations, not the county, the GREF consultancy, but not to exceed three thousand dollars in twenty observation.
I'll just clarify that in the past, we've contracted the A D observations through head services. However, the person that used to work with us there has moved on to a whole plan position in his school district. So we had to go out and find new people to assist us with this and we had to split up a number of observations to different companies. They both were, they both observers are former superintendents in our area.
Any questions, please?
Do we have an overall idea of how many are needed in like the, so this is kind of like beginning of school year, just like many buses, we make a little spreadsheet of how many observers we've got.
We do, uh, we have three hundred, about three hundred and fifty observations that we do with the, uh, eight, eight evaluators.
All right, as long as you have ducks in a row and you have another, uh, negotiations to follow, that's a hot topic and so.
We do, we keep everything on a spreadsheet. Uh, we highlight them as we go through them and, and it's.
I appreciate it.
It's always interesting, so I feel like a couple of years ago, when we got dinged on our budget for being too high administrative, administrator costs have to get way, wasn't there one year? And then we have to actually outsource to actually fulfill the administrative obligations that we can't fulfill with our in-house. Steve?
Sorry, Mr. K. It's okay. So the observations that we're discussing is related to number five and number seven. Is that, uh?
Yes.
And number six has nothing to do with it?
No, just some observation.
Any other questions? Mrs. Wagner, would you mind walking us through operations?
Sure. So next meeting, there are these two items that we will be voting on, use of, remember, church use schools for the, for banking camp. And, um, we will be voting on the cash payment statement in contact for the mayor.
If nobody has any questions under buildings and grounds, I do have a question on transportation. We got included in our packet this, this week, uh, a bus, a bus evacuation letter. I haven't seen that before, have I? Was that something that they have sent out before? They have?
Sure, yeah. I remember Dan's dad.
Okay. Um, why are we worrying about a bus evacuation?
It's really for the kids to wear a shirt clothes. And if there's, the kids shuffle back, they want to, not have skirts on and things.
Well, if there's an accident, the kids are going to wear what the kids are going to wear. There's going to be some kids in flip flops, some kids in skirts.
Well, no kids wear flip flops or.
Okay, whatever, whatever it talks about in the letter, I don't have the letter, I don't weigh the city, not the letter. Dresses, sorry, sandals, not, not flip flops. It specifically says sandals in the letter. Shouldn't we be doing a drill as realistically as possible? I mean, when there's, if there is a need to evacuate the bus, it's not like the accident is going to come to people's houses ahead of time and say, hey, there's going to be an accident tomorrow with the bus, everybody should wear, you know, easy to get out of the bus clothes.
So we do a lot of drills for all different kinds of things. And to minimize injury or any other negative point of the drill, we do that all the time. I mean, for example, we teach our, we teach our, our staff and our students what's called Alice, which is a student. They'll do whatever you have to do, you know, so throw a chair through it. We never, we never throw chairs through the drill. If, if, you know, putting a top of footwear on might result in helping the kids not, you know, twist and angle or something during the drill. Because your arms are on both sides of a bus, you know, so they're asking me to do it, you know, they're giving me a heads up. It's going to not be a great day to wear, uh, that footwear. But today, we can do. But to me, it would, it would make, it makes sense not to, you know, to minimize the possibility of injury during a drill. Obviously, if, if it's really happening, you know, it's not what I'm worried about, the kids have feet, you know, now, something twisted ankle, you know, it's better than having the bus fire, or whatever the thing happens.
It just, it just seems odd to me, the people who are going to be wearing dresses, skirts, sandals, whatever, it seems they should learn how to get out of the bus, when it's not an emergency, wear whatever they happen to be wearing.
Well, I'm sure that you still get out, but I hear it, this is going to help prevent injuries, is what my thoughts are on that.
Okay.
Well, you're right, as a rule, you always want to drill away, you know, the real-life application, but, uh, I think in this case, it makes sense to not, to be stressful.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could do a cold fire for a heart drill, but we wouldn't do that.
But you're also, you're also not going to drive a bus into a way and have an accident with it to make a realistic drill, but the kids are going to be wearing whatever the kids want to wear, when there's, when they're happy, if they're happy to see an accident.
I think, correct or wrong, the, the goal of this drill is to let kids know, hey, this is where the back of the bus is, here's the emergency exits, you know, they're probably not teaching them to like roll when they hit the ground. I mean, they're teaching them, just, it's the basics, so if you got to jump off a bus, by the way, it's very common. You know, something like that is probably like the idea of it, and, and I agree with Steve, you know, for one, kids that get hurt while running a drill, if we can avoid it, um, obviously, in an emergency situation, it's different, but my opinion is that it just makes, seems to be kind of common sense to tell them not to wear those type of things. You could have a dress on and then have an incident for inappropriate, you know, something happened, or a dress flies up or something like that, that's the whole point, and, I mean, you just, to me, it just seems like a smart thing, you know? Are we, has, Cashman's been providing the landscaping services just, well, like, on a monthly basis?
Yeah.
Get there, okay, maybe you were working on this, and then. Yeah. Do we, do we, have we already voted on the G A D in Oakland, or do we have to?
Yeah.
Any other questions on operations? Move on to the Good Cause, any, uh, committee reports that are outstanding? Board of directors, discussion, anything for the Good Cause, do?
I do, I do have to say, I can go back to my superintendent's comments in the minutes, um, that our date for Q-SAC monitoring is January eighth, and our board education representative, I see it's Mr. Kim, who attended the local meetings prior to the January eighth meeting, and that means, so we have to submit all of our documentation to this date by December fifteenth. They do a lot of it offsite, and then they come in to do a visit and actually see, you know, take some files, do a random search of things, and, uh, Mr. Kim is going to join us for our, I guess, being, uh, we're going to, we're going to probably be twice more, you know, in time, to, to, and, 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 so.
He's already committed.
He's excited.
Not, I think that would be interesting. Our January, so last Q-SAC review, that we, because we were, we were, it skipped, right?
Seven years ago.
Usually they call S O A, Safe and Shortest, that you do.
If you had, if you had achieved a certain level.
Which they still have, but now, in seven years, this is our seventh year now, they actually have to do it.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I've never, I've never experienced, yeah.
Is there anything, I was, I know part of that, right, is board, the board members being on state on training and everything, right?
Yeah, they were pretty good.
Were you ready?
Yeah.
My, my evaluation was done, these sort of things that were, like, the typical ones that sometimes I'll get, that you may think for, and, and all that stuff, which I already put them in all, or should I? Yeah.
So very strict, what, is that just one of this, or, or, um, personnel, they look at the, 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 the?
Uh, I did want to thank everybody who attended the foundation golf outing and dinner a couple of weeks ago. Went very, very well. In fact, I think they're getting to the point of almost being maxed out with a room for dinner, so, so.
Well, yeah.
Hey, I was a good guy.
They rolled extra tables in, I think, uh, earlier in the day, because they were kind of, extra people coming, so it was good. Um, they're, they're still kind of figuring out the final numbers, but I can tell you, it's greater than last year. I want to say that its whole number is going to be somewhere around forty-seven thousand, so, yeah. Just a phenomenal, another great year, we, between the golf outing, the live auction, the dinner, the turkey tray, they did really, really well, so I appreciate everybody's, they appreciate every support. They're already starting to look at rolling grants that are flying around, so, um, they're already going to spend that money and put it back into the U of D district for the students, so, it's great.
I think Steve mentioned it, if you had a library, uh, we could cut, that was probably well, it really came out really beautifully.
Nice.
It's nice, yeah, it's really, really nice job.
I like it, it's like, it's like, you know, March is some way of accomplishment, you know? It's kind of, same type of decision, so.
You, you. They were, American, American, they were, they were, yeah. American, I mean, they were just third, cutting the debt. This is one of the busiest year that.
He's cool, he's old, he's, official wedding.
Um, not directly related to the board, but at least related to the town. Congratulations and thanks to Laura for a well-executed food truck festival, and family day yesterday night. Everybody had a great time, appreciate all your hard work and efforts for that.
Thank you to, uh, yourself, and there was the Maris, and, um, uh, on the other part, also the volunteer, as well as many other residents of the town who volunteered to, to get back to the state. So I would say it was a good time, and I.
Looked out for weather.
Yeah, that's, between Saturday and, eh? Yesterday was beautiful.
Perfect. Anything else we can post? Sitting on, it'll open up for open poll comment at eight forty-nine. Okay, they related to district. See, we know one, I'll vote, it's open poll comment section at eight forty-nine P M. No need for, for, oh, you.
One thing on, uh, legal.
No vote.
No vote, five minutes.
They're all for, they're not out.
We will not be voting on anything after executive session, because that will be, so.
Thank you. Rick, you can, uh, you're going to pick this up tomorrow?
Yes. Mrs. Wagner, would you mind walking us through that?
Do you want me to go with Mark?
What's, what's your, no, Ricky?
Sure, um, so I would like to move that we made an executive session in towards a section B of the Public Beams Act. The purpose of this move session will be to discuss legal issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public, but the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second. Mr. Kim, all favor?
Aye.
Any names?
Yeah.
One?
One. One A and N attention. We're in executive session, as of eight fifty P M. Remember?